Good afternoon. Welcome to the City Council Meeting of April 21st, 2025. I call this meeting to order and ask that you rise for the singing of our national anthem.
the marketing department for the images of our city. I would like to now take the opportunity to read our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver Cree, Denny and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Today, we have a proclamation on the agenda. I'll take an opportunity to read the Earth Day proclamation. So from the office of the mayor, Earth Day is April 20/22/2025, whereas Earth Day was first observed in 1970 to raise awareness of the health of the environment, and whereas the first international Earth Day held in 1990 mobilized citizens and leaders in 141 countries to join a global effort to protect the environment, and whereas all sectors of society have the responsibility to act positively for the environment, and whereas our daily actions can pollute and degrade the fragile environment that both humans and wildlife depend on to survive, and whereas Earth Day is a day that is intended to inspire awareness and appreciation for Earth's natural environment, and whereas Earth Day encourages citizens to act positively for the environment and adopt personal responsible lifestyle habits that conserve and protect local and global ecosystems, and whereas Earth Day provides the opportunity for positive actions to conserve your natural resources by reducing, reusing and recycling using efficient transportation and buying and using vehicles and using products and services that are environmentally responsible. Now therefore, I, Jackie Clayton, Mayor of the City of Grand Prairie, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2025 as Earth Day in the Peace Region, and we encourage all community members to celebrate by joining the city at our Earth Day event this Saturday, April 26th, to engage environmental stewardship initiatives and sustainable practices. Thank you for that. All right. We're now going to move on to the adoption of our previous council minutes, and I'll recognize councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move the council adopt the minutes of the City Council Meeting held April 7th as presented.
Thanks for that motion. The motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with questions or concerns, I will call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of today's agenda. I will recognize councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks for that motion. The motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with any additions or omissions, I'll call the question. And that too carries unanimously. Now we'll move to the delegation portion of our meeting, and today we have three delegations that let us know ahead of time that wanted to speak to council. For those who might be watching from home, if you want to speak to council, there's a very simple form. You go online, let us know ahead of time what you're coming about, what you'd like to speak about. When we're having an evening session such as today, there's also an evening opportunity. So for this afternoon, we have three delegations. The first one being the Grand Prairie District Golden Age Centre. So I'll ask you to come forward, introduce yourselves. I'll give you, your microphone is on, so please have a seat. If you have documents, that plastic page protector there will show it to council on a screen. Once you're situated, if you just want to introduce yourself for those who might be watching at home, take about five minutes, present to council, and then I'll give my colleagues an opportunity to ask you any questions that they may have.
Sorry, Mayor Clayton.
I apologize. I was getting to you. At the end of our, after we go through the delegations, we'll go through the rest of our meeting, and then we will deal delegation business towards the end. Recognizing councillor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm going to declare a peculinary interest. I've got interest in a property nearby. I think what's going to talk about today, I'm maybe safe being here, but just in case other topics come up, just better safe than sorry, I'm going to remove myself.
All right. So we'll give councillor Bressi an opportunity to leave the chambers as he's declared a potential peculinary interest, and once councillor Bressi gets his key out and leaves the chambers, we will get started. Thanks for that, and welcome.
Thank you. So funny story. I grew up with very political US family. So I knew the American anthem before I knew the Canadian one. I thought I was a Republican until I was 18 and couldn't find them on the voting card in Peace River. So we are in the, pardon me?
Just turn your picture. Orientation is, thank you.
So I've been going through a name change, not realizing that centre Canadian spelling is RE. So I put through to the society name change the wrong thing, but that is now corrected to RE instead of ER. So this is our design. So we wanted the world. We wanted some really active vibrant colors representing community in our logo and our icon. So this this is our new name of our society. Fifty-five North Community Centre. There is a little compass in the O. It's kind of simple, but it just reflects what our center is about, which is vibrant, changing from that Golden Age Centre, which everybody thinks is a nursing home, which it's not. So I'm here today to ask council because the city owns the facility. If you guys could change the name of our building once this goes through officially to the society, which could take up to four months.
Okay. So just for those who might be watching online, just maybe say your name because we record these meetings. And so, and if somebody hasn't read the package, you're here on behalf of the Grand Prairie District Golden Age Centre. You're looking to do a facility name change. I see there's one other request in your delegation form. So maybe introduce yourself and then also talk about the other requests that you have today.
My name's Elaine Jobin. I'm the executive director at the Grand Prairie District Golden Age Centre. And I have had four meetings today. My brain is mush. I've been up since five. What was the other request?
You're looking for signage in the city?
Yes. Signage in the city. That's correct. So I don't know how all of that works, but I do know that some of the facilities do have signage, you know, city of Grand Prairie. And I am just wondering if that would be our responsibility to get that signage, or is that something the city would help us out with? Where we are, we're kind of tucked back in right on the park. So a lot of times people just miss us totally. So that's where that request came from.
Perfect. So council, an opportunity for questions. As indicated, they're looking to change the name of the facility. They're also looking for some support in regards to community direction, wayfinding, signing. We can ask those questions of administration when we deal delegation business. If we could just ask our questions for our delegate now, and we'll go from there. I'll recognize councillor Palott.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming in. I'm just curious to go through the process. Was this, I guess through your membership that you guys have decided that you want to do that, or is the members are well aware of this? This is the works already?
That's a really good question. This has been advertised through the board, our previous board last year when we started talking about the expansion project. And then we ran in-house advertising because we want to make it a public contest where everybody got a chance to pick a name and vote on it. So we used Reach FM for that platform, for our online platform as well. We had it posted in-house. One of our members did win the contest with the new name, Fifty-five North Community Centre. However, there have been some feedback that, oh, I didn't know about it. How did this happen? So the board explained to them at a meeting that, you know, this has been going on for quite some time, almost a year in fact.
So there's been a board motion. There's been process to get this point to that. And if I'm understanding correct, so you're asking the city about signage, but on the building itself and rebranding Golden Age Centre, that would be all an expense that the Golden Age Centre would pick up, changing your emails and all that kind of stuff, whatever that looks like. But the ask of the city is just the signage, if we updated the signage around?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Deason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thanks for coming in today, Elaine. Nice to see you again. I guess my question is sort of a tag on of what councillor Plott just finished off with. So here it says you would like council approval to change the signage on the facility to the new name. Then there's no cost attached to that for the city or Grand Prairie?
Um, it is a city facility. So would that cost be the city's or would that be ours? I would need that clarification to go back to the board.
Okay. So when we get to questions for delegation, we can talk about that. Sure.
Yeah, then that's sort of what I asked. The other question, why I asked. The other question was, have you costed out how much the sign change might be at all yet?
I haven't at all. I thought I would come here first and see what that would look like if, you know, we could do that.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. No, thanks for that. I think I'll have questions for administration here as far as the street signage. I don't know if that would be too, too difficult, but we'll find that out when we ask them to. Thanks.
Councillor Blackmore.
Well, thank you for coming in, Ms. Jobin. So my question is a little bit on the technical side. By the way, I like the logo. I think it's nice. I like the name change. I'm wondering you need to change your names through corporate services with the provincial government. Does that mean you need to refollow your bylaws as well?
No. According to them, we just have to follow it with our annual return, which we just did with that name change.
Okay.
For the society.
That goes a lot faster. So I think that you should hear back fairly soon. That's all.
Hopefully, they told me four months, but.
Councillor, thanks councillor Blackmore. Councillor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you very much. Have you done any changes to your bylaws? Like I know somebody was here last month and said that you can be a member at age 40.
Uh, no, that's not correct. Our membership starts at 55 plus. It's always been that way. Our bylaws were updated in May of last year. We had a special resolution where they were all brought up to date. That was done through the board with the help of volunteer services who are no longer with us.
All right. Thank you.
Councillor O'Connor.
Yeah, thank you. Councillor O'Toole asked it in a left-handed way, but latitude 55 and your starting age is 55. So I thought it's a very appropriate name. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I see no one else in the queue with questions. So thank you for being here today. And as I mentioned, we deal delegation business towards the end of our meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. If somebody wouldn't, there we go. Give councillor Bressi a moment to get resituated. And moving on to the next delegation to today's meeting, the Grand Prairie Beach Volleyball League. If you want to bring yourselves forward, your microphones are on. So whenever you get situated, if you get introduce yourself, feel free to grab one of those chairs. Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, you bet. Perfect. Thank you. All right. So same thing. Take about five minutes. And if there's any questions from council, we'll go through that.
Hello, council. Thanks for the opportunity to present today. My name is Patrick Beckert. I'm here with Sarah and Sean Herman. We are presenting on behalf of the Grand Prairie Beach Volleyball League and the Grand Prairie Beach Volleyball Club. We're here today because our current.
Turn that, sorry. It's just perfect. Thanks.
No, I think she meant this one.
One more time.
Oh, the other. Okay.
Right there. Perfect.
She did one of them. Never mind. So we're here today because our current four courts at South Bear Creek, while well-used and much-loved, are no longer enough to meet the demand for our growing volleyball community. Could get all the councillors to turn the page to page two of our document there, pass the cover. Want to give a little bit of context. So for Alberta indoor volleyball in the youth ages range U-12 to U-18 in club volleyball this year, there are 8,900 participants in our province. If you go a little bit further down, Grand Prairie involvement in club volleyball is about 540 athletes, 430 females, 110 males. It makes up 6% of the total provincial participation, which is interesting considering Grand Prairie as well under 2% of the total population of our province. In the adult leagues, in the co-ed league, we have 250 people. In the women's league, we have 400. For total local participation in indoor volleyball this year of just under 1,200. So if we move to look at the beach league participation, if you look at our chart, we got the last three years numbers. In 2023, we had 510, then 520 in 2024, and 600 this year. Now, when you see that, you may think, ah, that's the relatively flat growth. That's maxed out. Sarah here, who organizes everything, does everything she can to say no to as few people as possible and get as many people playing. And so you'll see in the red there, you'll see that's the number of people that are wait-listed. So let's talk a little bit about that. In the red box, our registration stats. It's pretty interesting. In 2023, our registration filled up in 24 hours. In 2024, we filled up in two hours, and this year we filled up in 18 minutes. Registration was only open for a total of an hour before Sarah closed it. In that time, we already had 50 teams wait-listed. Now, the reality is, the waitlist is just a name because you realistically aren't getting in unless someone else doesn't follow through on staying, and that's, you got like a, maybe one team might drop out. So what's particularly interesting is after Sarah closed the registration, realizing there's no point in allowing more people to attempt to register, she's had somewhere in the realm of 150 to 200 more people reach out to say we were unable to even register to get into beach volleyball, which again, the wait-listed people, that's, they're not getting in either. So in total, we're probably looking somewhere around 850 to 900 people that want to play with 600 that can currently. We are continuing to grow in the, on the youth side of things. If you look in the green box in the bottom right, we restarted the GP Beach Volleyball Club in 2024. It was invite-only due to coaching availability time, that kind of thing, courts. So we had 24 members, that's 12 teams. 10 of those teams competed in volleyball Alberta provincials. Five teams went on to nationals. A little shout out here, one of our U-16 boys teams won provincials, beating several Team Alberta teams to do it, and went on to nationals in Toronto and got silver in our country. That's in the first year of our club, right here from Grand Prairie. We're very proud of them. And in 2025, this year, we've doubled the size of the beach club, upping to 48 members, increasing coaches, and now having to split up and take up even further court time as we split up age groups. So if you turn to the third page, this may not be, this may be a surprise for some, but not for others. Volleyball is the number one sport for women and girls in our community. In the beach league, 70, just about 70% of our participants are female. Grand Prairie is seeing the same rapid growth in indoor and beach volleyball participation numbers that are happening North America wide. If you turn on ESPN, you can now watch women's volleyball, college volleyball, NCAA, so on and so forth. Unfortunately, with only four courts, we're having to turn away numerous community members from participating. People that have been playing in our league for 10 years are unable to get a spot this year. We have received a lot of negative feedback regarding this. We ask today that council move to work with our organization to explore the feasibility of expansion as quickly as possible. You know, and our belief is that waiting risks losing momentum and discouraging future participation with that many people already turned away. So we've done a little bit of work already in the past couple of weeks because our registration was just April 7th or 8th. We've already got a little bit of engineering and some rough estimate numbers. So if you look at the first bracket there, we're at $249,000 to expand the four courts. There's contingencies in there, and we also believe that there's good potential to get that number down. We are also interested in just under $50,000, that's a quote that we received, but again, there's more work that could be done on installing turf in a current dirt area, and I'm going to show you guys a diagram in a second. And if the council is feeling flush with cash, you would have the option for lighting, but it is, we will admit, it's not necessary. So on the fourth page, so again, this is South Bear Creek. Okay. So you can see in top there at the junction of the roadway, the existing four courts. Okay. And you can see how nicely we can fit four more courts south of that. And believe it or not, we don't even tap into the camping sites that are there. We do not, like, we will finish before that. It's ideal for us. We love this. A little bit of trees would need to come out, but we love the trees at South Bear Creek. It's windy here, and it protects us from the west wind, the south wind, and also the setting sun in the west. So we can actually see. There is also the existing bathrooms and water that's there that, for people to wash themselves off. I would like to point out on the existing court, there's some green diagonal lines. That is the area that we're wanting to put turf. It has been sodded, laid with sod and planted with grass many times, and it does not survive. We can't get water there. It's just dirt and rocks. It's a little bit dangerous for people. It is an area that people like to use to warm up. It's a bit of a safety concern. We would just like a permanent surface that would be safe and good for people moving forward. That is it. Any questions?
All right. Well, thanks for your presentation. I do have a couple of my colleagues in the queue, and just to confirm in regards to the turf, you mean artificial turf, right?
Yeah, artificial turf, yeah.
Okay. Recognizing councillor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton, and thanks Sarah, Sean and Patrick for coming in. A couple of questions. It says as quick, as soon as quickly as possible, I guess. There's no expectation for this season, is there?
We don't believe that that would be realistic at this time. Our hope would be for next season. See, the season starts May, end of May each year. It's a small parcel of land. The amount of work that needs to be done is not, you know, something that requires a lot of time. So we're hoping that we can get that for next year, just due to the numbers that we're looking at. We don't want to wait.
Okay. And that's perfect. Yeah. And this isn't something that we budgeted, and we're already into our budget year. So thank you for, for being reasonable on the request. Do you guys by chance have any? do you guys by chance have any reserve funds that would help push this project along?
Well, so, the reality is, is beach volleyball is extremely affordable. Uh, you know, to put a team in is, what, a hundred and eighty or two twenty? Am I, am I misremembering?
About two twenty-five.
About two, two twenty-five per season. Um, there is two to five thousand dollars left over at the end of the year from our operating. The city contributes nothing to, like, uh, the city has no operational budget or contribution whatsoever to the club for those courts. It's a hundred percent community-run. So, unfortunately, we don't have, yeah, we don't have existing cash that we're sitting on. We try to keep things cheap for people.
That's fair. Thank you.
Councilor Blackmore.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, having had a daughter who played beach volleyball, or granddaughter, um, I spent a lot of time there. I've never seen people get so dirty in my life.
That's improved over the years.
Uh, the sports lighting, if you don't get that, does that shorten your season at all?
Yeah, like, it's, it's kind of what a lot of our members have requested the last few years, I guess. But, uh, no, it doesn't significantly impact what we do, uh, for the most of the season. Um, just because of the changing seasons, typically, it would be the last week or so that the lighting would really kind of enhance our, I guess, our season, but we could potentially go a little longer if this, if the lights were in play.
So, right now, your season ends around August twentieth, something like that?
A little earlier, actually, the week before that.
The week before that? Okay.
The week of August, yeah.
Okay. Um, and the other question about turf, I had you already answered, so I'm good. Thanks. Counselor Plot.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Uh, thanks for coming in, and I appreciate everything you do for the community. I know my, my daughter loves the facility and is grateful for what you guys do, and I know the anxiety of the parents this year when the, uh, it filled up. But I am curious, on the six hundred, um, oh, that's six hundred, maybe I missed it. Is, is that just youth, or is that the, the seniors and the mixed and the lady? Like, is that all the leagues combined?
Yeah, for sure.
And are, is it utilized basically seven days a week now, pretty much? Like, is it?
Yes, it is, yeah. Our league runs five days a week, but with the club, we occupy a lot of the daytime space. Of course, when school is out, um, we still have summer camps that use in the morning, afternoons. Um, but our league typically goes evenings, um, sorry, kind of four o'clock onward, I guess. And then all day Saturdays can be tournaments that we run sometimes, and then Sundays are completely full as well. So, in our user agreement, we did have space for, or we were supposed to allow space for public use. So, right now, we are keeping up with our end of the bargain. Um, but yeah, I guess, you know, they are utilized as much as possible.
Okay, so there's not a lot of spontaneous use, really. It's mostly booked.
No.
Well, there is spun, yeah. Whenever it's not, when there's something not scheduled, then people are there and playing. It's actually difficult. You might drive by, like, "I want to play," and it's like, it's already full. Um, and to mentioning the school groups, so while school is in, school groups are also renting it and using it in May and June.
And June, yeah.
Right? And then it moves to, there's all kinds of clubs, uh, that then rent it and provide their own beach volleyball camps and so on during the summer. So, it's actually difficult to get public use.
And can I have one more, Mayor? Um, thanks. Um, just curious, uh, lots of times when we've done these, these, these types of projects with user groups, you know, your opportunity to leverage community funding is different than the city. So, I'm just wondering, do you have, um, groups that would look at fencing or demol, demolition, or some of the things within this that could help ease our, I guess, burden on what it would cost the taxpayers?
There's been a lot of discussion, especially, you know, once people realized they couldn't participate. What can we do? What can we do to help? And so, as, a lot of people are very well-connected to, you know, we'd love, we are a not-for-profit, so there's no tax deduction, but getting, uh, someone to, you know, uh, take down the trees for free and do some grading for free, or provide some equipment for free, or something along those signs, those lines for some signage at the facility. Um, you know, we're, we're, we understand. I mean, we're hoping council can help us, uh, also navigate grants. Like, we're, we're newbies at this kind of stuff, so if there's ways and things that we should be doing, we're happy to get on all of that as fast as possible.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Counselor Teason.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thank you very much, everyone, for coming in. Uh, I think you heard it here, volleyball's pretty popular amongst the grandkids and kids. Even my stepson, he's pretty much regular at the beach volleyball courts there. Um, now, on my previous term of council, I know that we discussed expanding it, the, the beach volleyball courts. Um, now, I think we did, but we expanded it to four courts from two courts, uh, or not at all.
We just changed the orientation of the courts.
Okay, yeah, because there was a, there was a proposal last term, I believe, to add two more court spaces. The reason I bring that up is just, uh, curious, have you had any, outside of today, have you had any discussions with administration, uh, as to some of perhaps the previous work that had gone into our administration, maybe looking to expand that as well, before you came forward with this ask? Because there, there could be some information we might have in-house that would be helpful.
Our understanding is that actually we've never come before council for anything for the beach volleyball.
Oh, no, you're just administration.
Oh, uh, there's been asks, but, you know, the, the tell was just, and rightly so, you know, it's maybe not planning far enough in advance, but it's like, well, there's no money right now. There's no budget right now. So, um, a- again, the change in activity levels or participation levels has been very quick. Um, and it goes, but it, we see that everywhere throughout our province and our country and North America as a whole, so we're just trying to react to that and keep up. The, one thing I'll say is, like, with youth participation in indoor and beach being so strong, what's happening is every year, you have a group of eighteen-year-olds that age out into the adult leagues that don't stop. They're still playing in everything that they can, and we have a new group, and that's why we're seeing such quick increase in numbers.
I think you're describing my stepson's group, uh, because that's where he is every summer. I have one quick question, if I may, Mayor Clayton. Um, so, I'm, like, like the, how much work that you all have put into this, and I do see that there's a, a great demand for it. My question is for you, by adding, uh, four more courts potentially to this, has there been any consideration with storage on-site? I know you have, you have a shed there, am I correct, uh, for storing the nets and other stuff? Um, would you need to expand that at all, or is, is there plenty of room still existing in there that if it were to move in a year or so, uh, with an investment like this, uh, would you need to build another shed or get a bigger space?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't anticipate that, that need at this time. Um, are, we actually leave the nets up for the entire season. Obviously, we store them for the winter. Um, but yeah, I don't anticipate needing an additional, I mean, that would be nice, of course, but I'm certainly not asking for that at this point, for sure. I think we can handle what we have by doubling the court space.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for that. Counselor Teason, Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming. Uh, you've put down for four new courts potentially, and how will that help you out in, in the future? Like, are you going to be maxed out again right away, or, like, I'm thinking if you're coming here and you need eight, then maybe that's what they ask should be. Um, because, you know, you can get all the work done at one time kind of deal. But, uh, just something for you to think about. I don't think we're making decisions today at this point, but, uh, and maybe there's another potential for another washroom or something like that, shower stalls. So, just giving you some insight on how things operate. Pickleball, we've, they, they got pickleball, but now they could use fourteen more courts. And, uh, so, with the four, how will that put you potentially in next season? Are you still going to be sold out in eighteen minutes next year?
That's a really good question. Maybe five minutes? I don't know. Um, I think the four additional courts would significantly help us, um, for the next, I mean, I can't predict the future, but we've been operating for almost twenty years now with the four courts, but the growth the last three to five years has been so much more. Um, so, yeah, I think, you know, given the space that we have here at South Bear, which is our, we absolutely love this location, um, and, and adding those four, I don't really see without, you know, destroying anything else, um, and going further west, for example. Like, I, I think the four additional would fit in great, and I think we would be extremely happy with that and maximize those additional court space as much as we can and make it work, for sure. So, I, I see your point, and I, I agree with that. Making sure maybe additional bathroom space may be, may be needed. Um, we have an outdoor shower there as well, which is, which is great. Um, but again, given the space and, and the location, I wouldn't want to put any additional spots. Like, people have always asked us to go into the parking lots and things, and I'm like, you know, or an additional, or sorry, an additional location in the city, and I don't think that would work as well as right there on-site.
Well, thank you very much, uh, for coming today and expressing your concerns and your needs, and, uh, we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I just had a couple of questions. Uh, so, following, uh, Councilor O'Toole's comments, I'm assuming that if four courts would allow your league to expand, um, over a few years, uh, however, you know, your numbers show that have a hundred and fifty waitlists, I would assume that means there's potentially youth that aren't even trying to register, that your actually demand is significantly more than that hundred and fifty?
Yeah, and those are individuals, not teams, of course, but, um, yeah, I didn't want to give anybody a false hope that there was even a chance to get even on a waitlist, so-
Right.
I'd never had to, to shut it down in seventeen years of doing it, so.
Yeah, like, like realistically, so the one fifty that made it to the waitlist, from the texts, emails, and phone calls that the Hermans have taken, uh, we're looking at least double that number that have reached out that aren't, weren't reflected on the website numbers because they weren't unable to register. So, you know, we'll conservatively say three hundred people didn't get an opportunity, um, which was-
So, if you're playing, if you're utilizing four courts for six hundred, adding another four, you still have room to grow, which is great, but also, I'm curious, would that allow you to potentially host more tournaments and, and create more, uh, sport tourism through having a larger facility?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Like, we have to travel, of course, Edmonton, Calgary, Red Deer, bigger centers. Um, and so, we would potentially be able to host here. Volleyball Alberta would be able to say, "Hey, you know, yeah, we have the bare minimum, of course, to host the Alberta Summer Games," but yet the expansion would allow us to, um, host some larger events, absolutely, which, of course, has economical impact that-
And now, with the recovered recreation space, they can practice in the winter. All right. Well, thank you for being-
Tell me more.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate your time. As mentioned, uh, questions for administration will follow, will happen later on in the meeting, and any direction that council chooses to take will also happen later in the meeting. So, appreciate you being here today. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, our third delegation for today, Mr. Alan Ruffian. If I pronounce your name incorrectly, I apologize. Uh, if you wanted to come forward, um, and take five minutes to address council, council may have some questions for you, um, but welcome, and thanks for being here. And, uh, please introduce yourself for those who might be watching.
Hey, good day, council. Uh, my name is Alan Ruffian, and with me is Jim Pulse, and we're here to address mainly the vehicle noise in Grand Prairie. With the noise bylaw, which is supposedly we have. So, uh, vehicles, it's not just one vehicle. It's, I live, uh, just a quarter of a block off of a hundredth street on a hundred and sixth avenue. So, we had a crosswalk there with lights. We got lights on a hundred and eighth. We got lights down by, uh, on a hundred and first, and you can hear all these noisy vehicles from five in the morning till after midnight some nights, and sometimes at three and four in the morning. So, it's not one vehicle, but it's many vehicles. Uh, one evening while walking to the hockey game last week, four vehicles in a row with their windows down, music cranked as loud as it could, and it just about deafened you when they go by. A week ago, we were at, uh, the Chinese, uh, restaurant on, on First Avenue. After dinner, we were standing outside talking. We had to quit talking because of the motorcycle noise on a hundredth street. And that, this is continuous. You can, warmer the weather, the more noise. If Jimmy has a loud vehicle, Mike thinks he can make a vehicle with more noise, and it doesn't seem to go checked at all. I'm just wondering, I've been here, this is my fourth time, but in this regard, I've never seen anything done. I've talked to bylaws several times, reported many vehicles with noise issues. Of course, all they can do by that time is phone them. We need to have some education out there, educating these people that noise isn't, uh, to be, uh, allowed in residential areas or anywhere in the city. You can hear trucks coming in from the north, going around the corner of a hundred and sixteenth avenue with their straight pipes and their jake brakes on, which is not supposed to be allowed. Nobody checks it. You can hear motorbikes on the other side of town going around town. They're that loud. So, I'm just wondering what council has in mind to address the situation, and it's all over town. It's not just one, one area.
All right. Well, I appreciate you being here. I have a couple, uh, my colleagues have questions for you. Recognize, Councilor Blackmore, first.
Well, you have my utmost sympathy. I feel I should be sitting at that table with you because the entire time I've been on council, I have asked time and time again, why bylaw and our police services seem completely unable to address noise in the city. Um, I know that in order to create that much noise with your vehicle, you need to, uh, change out your exhaust system, which is illegal to do. Um, and yet, we just seem to be handicapped. So, I'm wondering, uh, if you have thought to go to the police commission, uh, when they have their regular meeting and ask to do a presentation there?
I've, uh, never gone to their meetings, no.
Well, I'm sitting next to someone on the police commission. I'm wondering if that would be a possible or one more step in, uh, trying to handle an issue that just simply gets worse every year.
One day, uh, sitting at the lights on a hundred and first and a hundredth, I was in one spot. There was a vehicle in the middle with no exhaust, and the police was sitting next to him and didn't bat an eye, so I don't know what that's going to do.
All right. Uh, so, uh, I know council will have some questions for administration. I do know that the Grand Prairie Police, um, uh, police service under the leadership of Chief, uh, Chief Lacusta, they have done quite a few education sessions in regards and had quite a few infractions, but when we get to the, the conversations with administration, I'll get some of that information for you from, uh, Mr. Lemieux. Um, but I will also maybe, uh, ask my colleagues that are on the commission if they know of any upcoming. Uh, this is the time of year where we definitely see, uh, an increase in this activity. Um, so, I'm just wondering if council representatives on the commission are aware of any, um, education sessions or, uh, initiatives that are coming to fruition. Counselor Bressi and then Councilor O'Toole.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I do know that this was a priority that Chief Lacusta shared. I, actually, uh, he was here when a delegation presented on the, I'm not sure if that was you, Mr. Ruffian, or if that was a different delegation, but there was a different delegation who was here about this time last year, and as a response to that, um, he did order a number of enforcement issues where a number of tickets were given out. It wasn't just education sessions, but a number of tickets were given out too. Um, and, uh, that is something that, I don't know what the specific plans are this spring, but I'm definitely happy to talk to Chief Lacusta and bring it up at commission and make sure that we're doing that push again this year if my colleagues around council want us to do that. That being said, I also know that it does need to get balanced with other policing initiatives, where this is often something that, um, you, when you, when you see a police car on the road, you don't know what business is up to, and as important as it, as it is to have good quality of life, and I do expect enforcement initiatives here to, there are times where a police officer will see an infraction, but they can't deal with it because they are dealing with other matters of police business as well.
Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Uh, Council Bressi is cor- correct. Um, I can tell you that the chief has said, because of many complaints, that, uh, it's very difficult to charge somebody to say your vehicle is too loud. So, Edmonton tried it, Calgary's tried it, and other municipalities, and it's, it's, it's a very difficult and complicated process. But I'm going to tell you here that if a vehicle has modified equipment on it, like headers or open exhaust, that's where they can charge you, and they can actually tow the vehicle to an impound yard and get it fixed before it comes back out.
The majority of these vehicles are modified exhaust, and all these modifications also take off your emission controls. We're so worried about, uh, emissions coming off of vehicles. Well, they're enhancing it, especially these diesel trucks.
Yep.
When they slow down in front of you and then gas it so you're in a smoke cloud, that's healthy. That's really healthy. Uh, and I don't need an instrument to tell me when a vehicle is too noisy. If it sounds noisy, that's likely because it is.
I agree. I'm not saying it's when it gets to the court system is that's when they have concerns. Like, what gives you the authority, and I'm just telling you how the process has been in the past, what tells you, what gives you the authority to say a vehicle is too loud. And so, I get that. I'm on your side here. Uh, I don't live too far from a very busy road as well, but in order to be- busy road as well. But in order to be, to be a success, we all gotta be on the same page. And if somebody is pulled over because of a loud vehicle, and we see that the vehicle has been modified, then they can bring their sound meter out and check and do whatever they do and issue a ticket. And if you need to know more, I would suggest you come to a police commission meeting.
I would like to, yeah?
Yep. And that would be, that would be great, if you could. The season's just getting out there. We're all the motorbikes are out there now. I know I couldn't get any sleep at all the other day because they drive down by my street very fast, too. Was expecting them to hit the gravel on the road and be a big bang after they took off, but they didn't. So, thank you very much for coming and expressing your concerns.
Is there no way of getting a message out there to the community, either through signage or advertisement on the radio, that as of a certain date, bylaw will be enforcing noisy vehicles?
Councillor Bressi, do you know when the next police commission meeting is?
Next police commission meeting isn't for a few weeks. We just had one last Thursday. But it is something where my understanding and expectation is that this is enforced on a regular basis. Obviously, you're not gonna catch every single person that does it, just like you don't catch every single person that's got an off-leash dog, or every person that unfortunately litters or speeds. So unfortunately, you're not gonna catch everybody, but my expectation is still throughout the whole year that people are being fined if, if there's opportunity to do so.
And the more you catch, the more the word gets out there.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you. Oh, sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Hi. Name is James Puls. I've just been in Grand Prairie for 14 years. When we first moved here, we, we moved into the senior development 60-plus on 116th Avenue. It's called Horizon Village. Well, we were there for about three years, and we were forced to move because of the noise. You couldn't sleep at night in the summertime if you wanted to have an afternoon nap, for example, forget it. So we now live in the shores, which is back by the lake, and is far more quiet in that area, far goodbye there. I also sat on, pardon my voice, drink water, I also sat on city council in a small city in Manitoba. And when we had an issue in the community, whether we would identify the seasonal issues that we would have, where policing would be involved, we would sit down with the 16 officers that we were associated with at the time, and we would work out a solution. We would, like, identify, one time, we had theft and vandalism increased hugely. So two of the officers were delegated in order to take on the, find a solution to this or to get the numbers to come down. And they did so by putting an officer on top of the tallest 11-story building we had. And he, with very specialized equipment, was able to, with night vision and so on, identify the people that were involved. It wasn't long that they were apprehended, and then the numbers came way down. So in this situation where you have a lot of noise in the city, I know it's hard to deal with it from a bylaw standpoint of view. But a couple of officers, whether they be peace officers, RCMP, all we had was RCMP at the time, if they could be delegated to look into the situation and spend some time focused on that only, and maybe they would come up with a solution that would deal with this noise problem. Thank you.
Really appreciate you being here. Thanks for your time today. All right. So, gentlemen, as I mentioned, we deal delegation business towards the end of our meeting. You're welcome to stick around. All right. Thanks so much. Moving on to item number eight on today's agenda, bylaw C-1474, the indoor recreation facility borrowing bylaw. And, give me one moment, please. I will turn this one over to Ms. Whiteway for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So, this one is returning for additional, for second and third reading, pardon me. So the necessary advertising and petition period has closed, and this is for a total of $10 million on the project. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Ms. Whiteway. So, moving to business arising, recognizing councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I think this was one of those that my committee had started, so happy to move it forward once again. I'd like to move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1474, being the indoor recreation facility borrowing bylaw.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
I just have a question from Ms. Whiteway. So, the advertising period is closed. Did you receive any comments or responses as a result of that advertising period?
Ms. Whiteway?
Thank you, through the mayor. No, we did not.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Councillor Berg?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council give third reading to bylaw C-1474, being the indoor recreation facility borrowing bylaw. And once again, just to speak to this, this is for a recreation facility that we're looking to put up on the north end. And in order to get that project rolling, we need to borrow a bit of money.
Thanks for that, councillor Berg. Seeing no one in the queue, a discussion or debate. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number nine on today's agenda, under reports, we'll now move to the subdivision and appeal board clerk appointments. And I will turn this one over, sorry, I just got kicked out. Ms. Pinnock, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. This is an administrative report, bylaw C-1444, to establish a subdivision and development appeal board. Section 6.1 says that one or more clerks must be appointed by resolution of council and shall not be a member of the board. The subdivision and development appeal board hears most of the subdivision and development permit appeals and stop-work order appeals. There are eight members currently appointed to the SDAB, and two clerks. The clerks are trained through the Land and Property Rights Tribunal, and the training is good for six years. As per our bylaw, clerks must be appointed by a resolution of council. So administration recommends that council appoint Charlene Loxam as the subdivision and development appeal board clerk for the city.
Thanks for that introduction. Ms. Pinnock, turn it over to council, recognizing councillor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I don't have any questions. Just figured this is pretty easy stuff. Our administration does their due diligence, and Charlene is totally an appropriate person to appoint to this. So I'd move that council appoint Charlene Loxam as a subdivision and development appeal board clerk for the city of Grand Prairie.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, so I'll call And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 9.2, the 2025 weed inspector appointments. And I'll give Ms. Maryman a moment to get set up. Once you're ready to go, feel free.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am here today to present the 2025 weed inspector and appeals panel appointments. The Weed Control Act of Alberta states that a local authority shall appoint weed inspectors and establish an independent appeals panel at least annually. There are two recommendations today. The first recommendation is that council appoint Barb Wielander, Emma Kimble, Ryan Nordhagen, and Chelsea Small as weed inspectors under the Weed Control Act of Alberta for the 2025 season. The second recommendation is that council appoint the general appeals board as an independent appeals panel for 2025.
Perfect. Thanks for that. I appreciate the introduction. Looking to council for business arising, recognizing councillor Blackmore.
Yes, I would move that council appoint Bob, sorry, Barb Wielander, Emma Kimble, Ryan Nordhagen, and Chelsea Small as the weed inspectors under the Weed Control Act of Alberta for the 2025 season, and appoint the general appeals board as the independent appeals panel for 2025.
Thanks for that. Opportunity for discussion, questions, debate. Seeing none, I'll call And that carries unanimously. Thanks for being here. Moving on to committee business for today, the council committee of the whole meeting held on April 8th, recognizing councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the council meeting, a council committee meeting of the whole on April 8th as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no errors or omissions, I'll call Councillor Bressi, how do you vote?
In favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item 10.2, the financial administrative services committee meeting held on April 15th. And I'll turn that one over to councillor Berg for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council adopt the minutes of the financial and administrative services committee meeting held April 15th as presented.
The motion is in order. Call the question. That carries unanimously. Councillor Berg, a couple items of business today.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1485, being the 2025 business improvement area tax bylaw. Just speaking to this, this is essentially the downtown association. This draws, it's an extra bylaw tax that draws monies from downtown businesses that goes to marketing events and beautification of the downtown area.
Councillor Berg, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call the question.
I would like to move council give second reading to bylaw C-1485.
Questions for administration, opportunity for discussion, debate. Seeing none, call the question on second reading. That carries unanimously. Councillor Berg?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council have third reading of bylaw C-1485 at this meeting.
I will see that there's no one in the queue for that, so I'll have a discussion, no discussion or debate. So I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously.
And I would like to move council give third reading to bylaw C-1485, being the 2025 business improvement area tax bylaw.
Thanks for that, councillor Berg. That motion is in order. So I see no one in the queue or discussion or debate on business area improvement tax bylaw C-1485. I'll call And that carries unanimously. Now gonna recognize councillor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just regarding the last bylaw, was totally in support of moving that forward to keep the BIA moving for the year. I am just curious, in light of Ms. Bosch recently resigning from her position, I've had a lot of members of downtown association, and not necessarily board members, but members reach out to me, wondering about what it would look like to disband the BIA. So I'm not saying that's something I want to do. I guess what I'm curious about is if there was a downtown group of business owners that wanted to look at making a change, what would be the process? And I guess what would council's involvement in that process be?
Mr. Berg?
What I would suggest is that we put this on a future committee meeting, that there are some requirements that, for the establishment of BIA, where it may or may not have council a directive at the beginning to trigger it, or it can come from the business community. But we could bring, just, I won't say it's a full report, but we could bring some of that basic information that's contained in the legislation for the committee to have a discussion, if that was the will of council.
If I can just ask then, so if I were to make a motion that was too, you know, fairly generic to the appropriate standing committee, would it be the council committee of the whole? So council would have a discussion on it as a group? I just, I'm just looking for direction, I guess, on that.
Mr. Berg, is there a preference?
I would say it would be, if council wanted to have the discussion as a full group, we would put it in the council committee of the whole. It would be, it would be up to council here to determine. If it's just the appropriate standing committee, I probably would put it to the finance committee. If it really was as a group, then to a future council committee of the whole, that we'll schedule that.
Okay. On that note, I'll just make a motion that we direct administration to come to council committee of the whole with a report on what opportunities would look like for the BIA in downtown Grand Prairie, leaving that hopefully fairly generic for my colleague. And I'm open to changes on that, but I'd like to leave it fairly generic for our administration to go back and look at opportunities. Again, I'm not saying I want to make a big change to downtown, but I think if there's an opportunity, maybe it is in the next year, if we're gonna look at that, and maybe learn more about what happens with downtown. And every year we approve a budget, and we, and some of us as members have got to sit on the downtown BIA, so I think we have a better understanding of where that money actually goes. But I just, Mike could give us a little more context as a committee as well, our council as well.
All right. So, I'm just gonna give a moment to get something into our, Mr. Berg?
Just a point of clarification. If it is to bring back the requirements in the legislation to allow for discussion, can do that fairly quickly. If it's beyond that and looking at options and what others are doing, that would just take a little bit more time. So if the intent is to have a sooner discussion with the basic legislation, just wanted to make sure we're meeting expectations.
Sorry, as I read that, I don't think that probably gives us enough, for me anyways, I'd be looking for is maybe what other communities are doing in this area would be one for me to understand. If we, if the BIA chose to not exist, what would that even look like? Would they have to go through, how many members does it take? What would that process look like? And then maybe operating models of what it could be if it wasn't that. And I think the operating models would probably be hopefully fleshed out if we looked at what other communities are doing for their operating model. So maybe it's, wordsmith rewords with my motion, the whole meeting with how other BIAs are being operated within Alberta for mid-sized cities. And if a BIA was to be dissolved, what would that look like?
So, currently, you're wanting administration to bring back information to future council committee of the whole meeting, to discuss opportunities for a BIA with comparables of other mid-sized cities in Alberta, as well as what dissolution would look like. Okay. So that motion is in order. I recognize councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. No, definitely appreciate the discussion, the motion coming forward. Bit of history that I've been told is true, I haven't verified it, but I've been told is true, is the BIA legislation was actually created for Grand Prairie. It was Grand Prairie businesses going to the province saying, we want to do this, can you create legislation for us? And that's led to BIAs which have been great across the province for a lot of cities. And so I'm really proud of the history of our downtown association. That being said, I also think every, every once in a while, and every couple decades for sure, you should probably look at something and say, no matter how great it's been in the past, is it something that's best of the future? That being said, I don't really know if this is a, I support this motion, but I don't really know if I want to have a lot of discussion about this around council. For me, my attitude with the BIA has always been downtown businesses asked to create the BIA, downtown businesses elect a board, and meet at AGM to approve the budget of that BIA. And who are we as council really to tell downtown businesses how to do their, how to do their business? We're just enabling to do the decisions they made. And so I don't want to have a lot of discussion about this around council. However, I also have heard some businesses downtown say, hey, we don't know if this serves our needs in the future. And I think we, if the downtown businesses themselves want to make changes, I think we should be enabling to do that. So I look forward to this report because it's something I want to be able to give to the business community, for that community to have its own discussions about, does it want to petition council for, council for changes? So 100% support the support, glad the motion got made. But when it comes back, mostly for me, it's community information things, share with the community, so that if there are people who want to drive us out of the community, that they've got the tools they need to be able to drive that for themselves.
100%. Councillor Plott to close.
I'm okay. I 100% agree with councillor Bressi. I think it's just, for me, I'd like to see their information come back so we can learn, so we can talk to our constituents about it. And it's really their BIA to make the decisions moving forward.
All right. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Councillor Berg?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that council receive the unaudited financial statements of supporting information for the period ending December 31st, 2024, for information. And just to speak to this, this is our 2024 unaudited financial statements. We had MNP come in, do the presentation. There was no flags, no red flags that they had seen, and it actually showed a bit of a surplus, which we'll address shortly. So just ask council to approve this.
So that motion is in order. I don't see anyone in the queue, so I'll call the question on the first motion. That carries unanimously. Councillor Berg?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council approve the transfer of- Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council approve the transfer of the 2024 operating surplus of $5.113 million to the following: 1.4 million to the new recreation facility capital project, 2,43,000 to the council strategic initiative fund reserve for the 2026 to 2029 term, 1.37 million to the Grand Prairie Police Services for capital funding, and finally 300,000 to the Community Enhancement Reserve. And I'll just speak to each one of these as we just approved. We're borrowing up to $10 million for the new recreation facility up in Trader Ridge. From this surplus, it was determined that 1.4 million could be moved over to that. Part of its contingency, but also it might mean that we just have to borrow less because we do have a little bit of surplus. Just over 2 million to the council strategic initiative fund reserve, and that's for the next council. And for this current council, we came in and we had about $3 million in that reserve. And what that allows us to do is as groups come forward or as situations arise that we need some unbudgeted emergency or much-needed funding, this allows council to move forward with that. With that, it's still a million dollars short of what this council started with, but we could still top it up down the road. 1.37 million to the Grand Prairie Police Services for the capital funding. From what I understand, there are some IT upgrades that have developed as the world advances and technology advances that will help our police service even more. So there's some money set aside for that. And at the last budget, what council had passed was that we would take 10, sorry, 10% of future surpluses, up to 300,000, and put those in the Community Enhancement Reserve. And that can be used for a number of things that improve the aesthetics of our community. And so we topped that out at all 300,000. And so that's where that number was determined. So once again, I just ask our council to approve this.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. And I just wanted to clarify again, ask question for Ms. Whiteway. If, once the, the list of opportunities comes forward from administration for the Community Enhancement Reserve, if council feels that they're not necessarily in favor of all the suggestions, that reserve money can stay in that reserve, or it could be allocated to another reserve as those reserves are under council's discretion. Correct?
That's correct, Mayor Clayton.
Okay, thanks. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Councilor Burke.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Now I would like to move council approve the audited consolidated financial statements of the City of Grand Prairie for the year ending December 31st, 2024. And Ms. Whiteway can correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I understand, this is the consolidated financial statements of the airport, the library, and the City of Grand Prairie.
Ms. Whiteway?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
The motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with discussion or debate, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Councilor Burke, any highlights from your meeting?
Yes, just let me bring it up. As you can see, we had a fairly busy meeting, but financial management, administration working on preparations for Q1 2025 report, which we presented next month, work continues to update documents and tools for departments for the 2026 budget preparations. Taxation and assessment schedule is prepared for the assessment appeal hearings. Forty-nine appeals were received, which is down from previous years. Procurement, supply chain management, current bids include broadleaf and noxious weed control, bear river control, structure armoring, paving designs, community gardens, playground sand, and baseball dugouts. And then in geotechnical and information technologies, administration continues to revise and update the spring and summer seasonal GIS application requirements for a variety of carpet department operations. And that's just a quick summary.
Thanks for that, Council Burke. Before we move on to the next committee report, we're going to take a five-minute recess, actually 10-minute recess. We'll be back with you shortly. Thank you. Welcome back to the city council meeting of April 21st, 2025. Thank you. As we took a brief recess, now I'm going to move on to the next standing committee report. Item 10.3 under Operational Services Committee held April 15th. And I will turn that one over to Mr., Chair, Councilor Plott for introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd make a motion that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held April 15th as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Call the question.
Bressi in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Councilor Plott, a couple items of business tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd make a motion that committee recommend council give three readings to bylaw C-1484, being the 2025 Special Recreation Services Tax Levy in Pinnacle Ridge. And just to speak to the motion a little bit, it's for $12.50 for every household within that community of Pinnacle to keep the fountain going. And that gives us a budget of about 8,350 annually to keep the reserve in a good spot and to keep this fountain flowing in the Grand Prairie.
Perfect. So that motion is in order. I don't see anybody in the queue, but I had a question. Chief Glavine, have you received any communication from any residents or public in regards to this, in this initiative?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We did receive one email from a resident subsequent to the committee meeting that expressed that they thought the funds that were allocated to the entrance feature could be better spent on a more central water feature, and they didn't make any comment on the fountain itself in the storm pond, but specifically the entrance feature. And that's the only one we received, and we did circulate that to all members of council.
Okay. Thanks for that. So the motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate. My apologies, it's first reading. No discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call the question.
Bressi in favor.
We're just early. I was going to say the same.
And that carries unanimously. Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd make a motion that council give second reading to bylaw C-1484.
That motion is in order. An opportunity for questions for administration or discussion or debate on this special recreation services tax levy in Pinnacle Ridge. Council Bressi.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I know we did get the one email of concern, and every time we do this, I hear from at least a few residents in Pinnacle that disagree with it. But I'd say actually really similar comments. I said it with the BIA race just a few minutes ago, and that it was Pinnacle that asked for this. And if residents in Pinnacle want this to stop, then happy to support them. I'm pretty agnostic on this. I'm happy to do whatever the neighborhood wants. But if residents want this, stop doing this, they need to get organized and take the formal steps needed to get a stop. That's just like the residents who started this took those formal steps. So therefore, I'll be supporting this bylaw.
Thanks, that, Council Bressi. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Councilor Plott.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that council have third reading of bylaw C-1484 at this meeting.
That motion is in order. So in order for us to have third reading here tonight, this must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Council Bressi, how do you vote?
In favor.
And that carries unanimously. Councilor Plott.
Thanks to that, council. I'd move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1484, being the 2025 Special Recreational Services Tax Levy in Pinnacle Ridge.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one on the queue. Seeing no one on the queue, I'll call the question on bylaw C-148 for 2025 Special Recreation Services Tax Levy in Pinnacle Ridge. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Next item of business, Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd move that Committee recommend that council allocate $181,661.10 from the transportation system levy reserved to the Trader Ridge Phase One project to reimburse Trader Properties Inc. for the geometric improvements completed on 132nd Ave. And I guess just to speak to this, this is basically a housekeeping item. The developer had put money up, and now he's obligated his ends of the development, and so this is a reimbursement back to them for their work done.
All right, so that motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue for discussion or debate, so I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor Plot?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Other than the business arising, thanks, Council for doing that. We had some service area updates from Acting Deputy Nellis at the time. And so Engineering and Transportation Services crews have begun clearing concrete islands and street sweeping, and will move on to the shoulder boulevards. We've requested a post request for tender for Bear River Control Structure Armoring, request for tender for Road Rehab Phase Four, and a request proposal for storm sewer rehabilitation. And Corporate Facilities Management preparation are underway for opening of the seasonal facilities. The Golden Age Centre has selected a design consultant, and drawings are being prepared for grant applications. And we are assisting with the Bear Creek RFQ and the Community Garden Project. In Environments and Parks, our priority areas are being worked through for litter cleanup. Satellite shops and equipment are being prepared for the upcoming summer season, and the annual city scrub campaign has launched and will run through the end of April. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Plot. Moving on to the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held April 15th, and I will turn this one over to Counselor Thiessen for introduction.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council approve the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held on April 15th, 2025 as presented.
Thanks for that motion. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Counselor O'Connor, how do you vote? And that carries unanimously. Highlights from your meeting, Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, Committee received a report on our point in time count. That's the time where we send out and work with other service organizations to see where homelessness count is at. And this is done once every two years, and it's just a measurement tool. It's not the most accurate depiction of where homelessness is at, but it gives us an opportunity to see our numbers growing, our people seeking shelter, our shelter beds full. And what we did find this year, from our point in time count from two years previous, is that our homeless population has grown 60, by about 60 people, up to 387. Now, like I said earlier, the point in time count isn't like the super most accurate, but we have gotten better over time at collecting data. Our mobile outreach collects their own stats as well, plus we're working with the service organizations and the shelters. We get a clearer depiction as to how many people are sleeping rough, and that is that number that you'll see in the graph that fluctuates sometimes. I'd highly encourage members in the public to check out the Public and Protective Services or even go to EngageGP. I know we have some information on the point in time count there as well. It is interesting stuff, and hopefully knowing these numbers will help us to make better decisions to get a handle on it and hopefully get people back up on their feet and housed. As far as our service area update, we did receive funding through a Government of Alberta grant, supporting the dedicated position of a needle mitigation worker. It's quite shocking, the stats here, in 2024, 92 calls were responded to for needle debris, and almost 7,500 needles were collected through service response and proactive measures. So we sure are grateful to the province for helping us continue to fund this position, which addresses public safety concerns in regard to drug-related debris throughout the community. Also, I'd like to make a big shout out to the 2024 Football Alberta Bowl that was held at Hanson Lincoln Field. They were honored with the sport event of the year by the Grand Prairie Regional Sports Connection, and this award recognizes the overall success of an exceptional single-sport, multi-sport, or collegiate event hosted in Northwest Alberta in 2024. So big congratulations to the organizing committee, the volunteers, the sponsors, the staff, and everybody who came together to make that event so great here in our community. Speaking of sports and great events, the Grand Prairie Storm will be returning for Games Three and Four on Tuesday and Wednesday. They are currently down to nothing in the series, but they are not out. Hopefully, they'll maintain their leads as they score those goals going forward, and we will be celebrating '25 as the AJHL Champions of the Year. Finally, on April 11th, we had eight new firefighters graduate from the Grand Prairie Fire Department Training Program. We did this celebration at the same time as we honored our Dispatcher of the Year, firefighter of the year, and our long service awards for our fire department. I'd just like to send out a big shout outs to our firefighter of the year, Mark Brazier. I know I got it wrong, Mark, so Brazier, Brazier, Mike O'Connor's yelling at me. Thank you. It's been almost 12 years I've known this guy, and I've never got his name right. It's the Don Cherry in me. And also, a big thank you to our Dispatcher of the Year, Lydia Lervy, for really stepping up with her story over in helping with the wildfires through Jasper and other great service points there. She's definitely a team player and a great member on the Grand Prairie Fire Department team. That's all I have for reports. Thanks so much.
Thanks so much for that, Counselor Thiessen. Moving on to item 10.5, the Council Committee, the whole of April 15th, 2025, one item of business on that, and so I will move, look to business arising. Counselor O'Connor. Yep, the business arising. Go for it.
I'd like to move council adopt the minutes of the council committee of the whole meeting held April 15th as presented.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Call the question. And that carries unanimously. One item of business there, Counselor O'Connor, if you wanted to continue.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like council to direct administration to negotiate and execute an amendment to the loan agreement dated November 14th, 2024 between the city and Masqua Medical Center, Canada, Inc., as to remove the requirement whereby Masqua must provide the city with the evidence of credit requirement. And to speak to this, it's an important piece for them to be able to get the shovel in the ground, and if we didn't do that, we wouldn't allow them, the project, to go ahead. So I think this is an important piece of business, so I encourage my counselors to vote in favor.
Thanks, Counselor O'Connor. That motion is in order. I don't see anyone in the queue, but I had a question. Chief Glavine, the conversation with Masqua was in regards to the development permit and the land from Northwest Polytech. Do you have an update in regards to that?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I believe that the development permit was issued, but they haven't submitted their building permit yet.
Okay, perfect. So to our knowledge, though, the land has been transferred to Masqua?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I believe that the, I'd have to clarify, but I believe that it's owned by the college, and I'm not sure about that they would have to sign off on any building permit as the owner of the land. My understanding is they have permission, is that Masqua has permission to apply for a building permit.
Okay, perfect. Thanks for that update. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. There are no items of correspondence today, so I'll move into delegation business. There are three delegations today, the first one being the Grand Prairie and District Golden Age Centre. Opportunity for council to ask administration questions and any business that may be arising. Recognizing Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I do have a couple questions for administration, just for clarity's sake, our delegates, perhaps members of the public as well.
Sorry to cut you off, because he's just plenty privileged for actually getting into this. I'll remove myself again.
Go for it.
Thank you.
So Counselor Bressey will declare conflict. We'll give him a moment to leave the chambers, and then we'll go back to Counselor Thiessen.
And you're forgiving Counselor Bressey. It's okay. Yeah, glad that he did that. That's good. So my question is in regards to the sign. I know the city of Grand Prairie owns the Golden Age Centre building, but if they were to change their sign, is it our responsibility for the funding and the installation of that sign on that building?
Ms. Bieberdorf.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. In their current operating agreement, the operator is responsible for the sign on the building.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, then they're just asking us to help them or just to give them permission to put the sign on there?
Thank you through the mayor. So they would like to rename the building, so currently the building's named the Golden Age Centre, and they would like to rename it and then put a new sign up in place of the existing sign.
Okay, yeah, no, that's good clarity. The other question that I had was in regards to the wayfinding signage. I know we have the little blue signs around town that says Centre 2000 here, East Link over there. How easy is that for the city of Grand Prairie to create for an organization or for any of our special interest buildings?
Chief Glavine.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. The process is quite easy to put them up. The process is that we, there isn't a formal process right now, so historically, they've been only used for more so tourist wayfinding signage. So to your point, going to Centre 2000 or East Link Centre or something that someone from out of town might not know how to get to, not for more local facilities, but there isn't a hard and fast policy to follow on that one.
Awesome. And Chief Glavine, just a question on the cost. So how much would one of those blue signs cost our sign guys to make?
Glavine.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Very ballpark, including installations, probably about $200.
Okay, thank you.
You had so many questions, you took everyone else out of the queue.
Oh, they're gonna ask those same questions, yes.
So seeing no further questions, I'll look for any business that may be arising. Counselor Thiessen.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Well, I think administration has already heard what the request has been. I don't know if they need a formal direction from council to allow that, or would they prefer it. I guess I'm kind of looking at the C E O right now.
Mr. Burke.
Yeah, I can say.
Ms. Bieberdorf.
It would be useful to have, sorry, Mayor Clayton, it would be useful to have a motion approving the name of the building. We will then work with the organization on any design. That's still a court requirement, is while they fund it, that it has to be our design approval, so that's something that would ensure that it met standards, but a motion to approve the name change would be appreciated.
Okay, cool. I was gonna butt with it, but if that's all we need, then I would move that council approve the proposed name change to, what was it, 55 North Community Centre, period stop.
All right. So we'll just give the clerk a moment to get that in the queue, or in the escribe, rather. So council approve the proposed name to change the former Golden Age Centre to the 55 North Community Centre. Get in there. You gonna amend that? To put the... So that motion is in order. Any further comments, Counselor Thiessen? Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Any other business arising? Recognizing Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, the 55 North Community Centre asked, I think it's Elaine, was her name? Asked whether or not there was other signage they would be able to have access to throughout the city, and I don't know what that looks like, so I was wondering.
That was the question Counselor Thiessen asked Chief Glavine. So maybe you can just reiterate that again, Chief Glavine, in regards to what the opportunities are for the organization to have some wayfinding signage in the community.
And how many?
Sure, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, so right now, the signage that we do have is limited, generally speaking, to more tourist-related signage, so things like the East Link Centre, Centre 2000. There is no policy in place for approving it, so we don't have a procedure that you apply for to do so, so we'd be looking for direction on that. But just given that the former, you know, loose criteria was tourist-related, this could open up to hundreds of different non-for-profits making the same ask.
So is it worthwhile, then, making, asking administration to bring back a report as to what it would look like for them, or do we need to get back to 55 North Community Centre and find out what they would like to see, which may not, or...
I think, as Chief Glavine mentioned, currently, the focus has been tourism-related facilities. If there's something outside of that, I would suggest that you make a motion to direct administration to work with the organization to bring back your request. As mentioned, the signs have been at about $200 per sign, so... But currently, if I could just help you a little bit, the Royal Canadian Legion doesn't have wayfinding signage, the Elks Club doesn't have, we have our service club service signs on the outside of the, on the perimeters of the city, but there's no wayfinding signage currently for a community club-type facilities. Is that correct, Chief Glavine?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. None that I'm aware of, for sure.
Okay, well, seeing that, I'll step back.
Okay, Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. The way I interpreted the conversation or the presentation was, is that they were looking for one sign on 102nd. Just because they're tucked in behind East Link and the other blue building, people may tend to drive by. It's in a short cul-de-sac, so that's how I interpreted, was one sign on 102nd, just kind of telling people that it's tucked in behind.
Counselor Blackmore.
Yeah, I feel that they can certainly work with the buildings and the businesses around them to put a sign either on the side of the East Link building, or, you know, there's options there for them to move their sign out onto the street, I feel, but that's something that they need to look at and budget for and take the steps necessary to do that.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, I'll move on to the second delegation, 12.2, the Grand Prairie Beach Volleyball League, recognizing Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just wanted to confirm with administration when the delegates were here, they had mentioned that the city doesn't spend any money on these courts at all. I guess I kind of assumed that we would do a spring-fall clean, but I wasn't sure if this was 100% beach club-driven or if the city had any involvement with it at all.
Ms. Bieberdorf.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. There is some minimal work that's done by the Parks Department, so specifically around the fencing, many fertilizer, pesticide-type things, the shrubs, trees, landscaping around the perimeter as well, but that would be the extent of the city's involvement in the operation of the courts.
Okay, and realizing it's a large cap ask, and we've done budget for the, I guess I just looked at administration, how we could move this project forward, if there was an appetite to move it forward, to give them an appropriate funding source without it getting to fall budget deliberations, because I don't know if that would work in the cycle of actually getting it open by May of 2026 or not.
Mr. Burke.
What I would suggest is a motion for us to go away and work with this group. They brought forward some numbers and some engineering. I think I would appreciate some time just to work with our administration to confirm some of that and to look at some of the options on timelines, but that would be not wait till fall, but for us to bring something back in Q3? Q3, we'll try and make that early Q3, but in Q3, for us to bring that back to committee for consideration.
So Counselor Plot, it would be appropriate to make a motion to direct administration to work with the Grand Prairie Beach Volleyball Club and bring back a report to the appropriate Standing Committee, if that works for you?
I'm okay with that. I'm just concerned about the timing. Like, I know when usually we make motions, we don't come back with any kind of end date on it, but I guess for me, it'd be a little bit concerning about the timing. If we don't get a report back till August, September, campaign season, I just don't think, for me personally, I don't think Q3 gives us much time to talk about it and put it in budget. I just, I'm just wondering if administration could still bring it back somewhere later in Q2. I guess, I'm just worried about the timing of it. We get to Q3, and anything, if there's any little hiccups, it gets to budget, and we're now at budget. And to me, quite honestly, if we're talking about budget liberation and doing this, then this isn't happening in 2026. I guess I was hoping more for, if we feel there's a movement around the council that sees it as a midterm ask, then how do we deal with it as a midterm ask? Because I'm concerned about it getting to budget and not getting done in 2026.
Mr. Burke identified that it could be brought back in Q2. Mr. Burke identified that it could be brought back in Q2.
Okay, I'm happy to make a motion, but I'm sure there's other colleagues in queue, so I'll pop back in.
Wait for the motion to get in the escribe. I'll look for other...
Prefer to do a motion now?
Yep.
I just make a motion that we direct administration to work with the Grand Prairie Beach Volleyball Club to find appropriate funding source and scheduling, and have the report back to committee by Q2.
Okay, sorry, it wasn't, Mr. Burke didn't say that he would come back with a funding source. It was more working with the club, seeing what the true costs were, and then coming back to council.
Okay, so I can pull that now, but I guess when they come back, we're gonna be looking for funding sources. So wouldn't it be?
Well, I think the CFO would be able to identify some funding sources for less than $300,000 relatively quickly.
Okay, fair enough. So I can pull the funding source part out of it.
So the motion in the escribe, if that works for you?
Let's take a review of it. That's fine for now. I think it's fairly, I want to leave it fairly generic and beg for admin to work with it, but also want to signal to the club that we're willing to work with them as soon as possible to try to make this a reality.
Counselor Blackmore.
I'm happy to support that motion. I would like, when administration does talk to the beach volleyball clubs, that make some effort to maximize the amount of court, new court space. So instead of four new courts, if they could do six in, without using, without running into trouble land-wise, or, you know, I just think that they need more than doubled. Otherwise, they're gonna be back in two years asking for another two or four courts. So that was one thing I wanted to talk about. The other thing was, I was looking at the area that they want to put turf down, and I'm wondering, we had some turf that we used at the Folk Festival on the dam. I know we had somewhere to put that turf afterwards, but I'm wondering if there was any left over that we could simply give them.
Chief Lemieux, do you happen to recall, or Ms. Beberdorf, if all the turf was utilized?
It seems like there's none of that turf left. It was all used.
Okay, it was just an idea.
Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I'm also happy to support this motion. One thing, so I guess it's been burning in me, my memory and stuff like that. But Ms. Beberdorf, are you aware of the history of that site, and if we had, in previous budgets, like talked about the growing expansion of beach volleyball, and if we're gonna add two courts?
Ms. Beberdorf.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Nothing in my time at the city. I was involved in the 2018 Summer Games, when the courts were reconfigured from the one orientation to the other. But that's all from my time.
Okay. The other thing that I'd just like, I'd like to point out, I know we're talking a lot about funding sources, but when we did the BMX bike track, I remember we put about $200,000 aside for that. And then when the consultant came in, he said, "That's great. You just paid for the dirt. Now you gotta build the rest of it, and that's gonna cost more money." And what happened from there was several incredible businesses and members from around the community came together to help build that. I know that the city was, was spearheading that, and we might have information, at least to share with the, the Beach Volleyball League, so that, you know, that as they start to search for it, maybe they're not asking for 300 or close to 500,000 if we do six courts, but maybe they can get most of that stuff taken care of, like through sponsorship and, and all that other stuff. But I know that we have that information available. It didn't happen too, too long ago. So I would encourage the administration to give them that little bit of information, so that they can come forward with maybe, hopefully, a bit thicker pockets.
Thanks for that, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor O'Toole? I have other people in the queue?
Just wondering, when we did that rental in 2018 down there, the shower that was installed, did we work that through parks? Because it wasn't there before.
Ms. Beberdorf, do you have any context on that?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. No, I believe the washroom facilities were there prior to 2018.
It was a shower, though.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have any information on that.
Okay. I'm pretty sure that I remember supporting it. What's the name of the guy?
Anything else, Counselor O'Toole, or can I move on?
You can move on.
Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you. No, certainly excited to be working with this group to expand what's a very popular sport, and appreciate administration working to get this to sooner rather than later. Just, I think if it comes to fall budget deliberations, we get it in Q3. If we want to fully fund this, can probably still get it done for next season. But if we want this group to raise sponsorship or gift and kind or something, then I don't know if fall budget deliberations allows that. And my preference is certainly that we partner in this strongly, but we don't 100% fund it, is definitely my, my hope for it. I guess my one other request for administration is, I know it wasn't these folks here, but I know a long time ago, I'm talking years ago, when the groups asked staff about maybe extending there, they got told that for some reason, it wasn't, it wasn't possible, and it wasn't feasible there. And I don't know if it was just different staff attitudes at the time, or different infrastructure needs, or whatever. But just my ask would be, I don't require multiple options to come to us. I don't need administration to study more than this one site, if this site is feasible. But if administration gets into it and realizes, holy smokes, for some reason, there's good reason not to do this expansion, then I hope that we'd also get sooner rather than later, well, where else can we put four more courts, whether in South Bear Creek Park or some, somewhere else? So I don't need options if this will work, but sure would love alternative options if this won't work for some reason.
Fair, Mr. Burke. I got a head nod. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just curious, when, again, when the delegate was here, they were talking about sponsorship opportunities. So if they were to sell, if somebody come in and said, "Hey, we'll do the engineering for the $10,000. We want to sign up," is that their option, or is that the city's option? I'm just not sure.
We do have other examples of that, but, Mr. Burke.
Yeah, that's something that we can work with them on. We, even the, the existing courts, I understand, we had gift and kind for the sand portion of it. So that's something that we can work through and, and work with them on, on both sides of it. As the operator, they have, they have an agreement in place. They, they could be receiving some of the sponsorship for that. So those are the kind of discussions we want to have with them in a more fulsome manner to bring back to council.
No, I'd appreciate that. I think there's a lot of opportunity here to leverage community funding. And if it's signs for them, then that's great. I'd, I'd certainly like to see this not board on the back of the taxpayers' whole amount. And I'm pretty confident that this group will do a lot of that work. So I'm sure you'll flesh it out when you have your meetings with them. Thank you.
So I see no one else in the queue, so I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. And our third delegation today, Mr. Alan Ruffianj. And I will open it up for questions for administration or business arising, recognizing Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. As, as this topic comes up quite often, I guess one thing that I'm not educated enough on is, I don't know how many fines we actually hand out. I'm, I'm just wondering if administration would have Q1, 2024, those kind of numbers? Would we have numbers where we actually figure out how much we're ticketing and how much, maybe just start signaling to the community that we are doing something with this? Because I think the general community feels that we're not. And so I'm just curious if admin would have those numbers.
Chief Lemieux.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yes, as a matter of fact, last year, Grand Prairie Enforcement Services made this a priority, and they put in place a noisy vehicle enforcement training course that was offered to all of our peace officers. Between January 1st and October 31st, 2024, we issued 160 violation tickets to noisy vehicles. Now, those tickets are mostly written under the Traffic Safety Act, because you're correct, whenever a vehicle has illegal modification that increases the noise, that goes against the Traffic Safety Act. So that's where the violation tickets have been issued. And so we have, we have started already doing random traffic enforcement operations. So peace officers have already started dealing with these issues for 2025. And we also are looking at training members of GPPS in our, from members of our Community Standards Unit. So we've had some initial discussions with them, and we'll be providing them with training. So we intend on making noise pollution and continuing focus for Grand Prairie Enforcement Services and GPPS. But certainly, I'm sure the police, police commission will also have a conversation about this. But those are the stats, 160 violation tickets.
In 2024.
In 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Blackmore.
I'm happy we've given out 165 violations. That's probably about 2% of the ones that need to get violation tickets. But I'm wondering if we have any kind of process, you know, of following up. So I give you a ticket, and two weeks later, I come back to see if you've rectified your vehicle in any way. Do we do that at all?
Chief Lemieux?
I don't have that answer. I'll, I'll follow, I believe there's a follow-up, but to what extent, I'll, I'll find that answer, and I'll share it with council.
And can you tell me what, how much the ticket is?
I think it depends on the violation, but I'll also provide that information to council.
My understanding was if you have a violation, such as modifying your vehicle, that you do need to go to the police station and show that you have resurrected that, rectified that. But the fines, depending if it's tinting of windows, if it, depending what it is, they can be significant. Not all of them, but some of them.
I just would feel better if I knew that we were seriously making an effort to crack down on excessive noise. And in my years of living here, I just don't feel we are.
Yeah, and I agree. I think we've made significant increases because we were doing nothing before. So to go from 0 to 160 is significant. Is there room for improvement? 100%. This time of year, it's very loud out there.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Thiessen.
Zero to 160, that's faster than zero to 60, which is what they advertise cars at, miles per hour. Anyways, question for administration. I know that we've deployed bylaw, peace officers, and RCMP along 68th Avenue. This gentleman is talking about 100th Street, and I know 100th Street can be a very loud road. I used to actually live on 100th Street up by Swan Haven School not too long ago, and it's pretty consistently loud. Do we have, do you know by chance where we've deployed, I guess, our bylaw enforcement to capture, I guess, excessive noisy vehicles?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I can't give you a specific location, but what I will tell you is Enforcement Services focuses on areas where we get complaints. Where do we get most of the complaints? I did make a note of this location, 100th Street, 106th Avenue, and I'll follow up with Enforcement Services to, to find out if they've done traffic enforcement in that area, and encourage them to do so moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Burke.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Chief Lemieux, you just mentioned areas where they receive complaints. Where would citizens register those complaints? Is it with bylaw, with the RCMP here at the city?
They can do that, or they call 3, they can call Access GP. They can call 311, and that'll be recorded, that'll be passed on.
Yeah, because that was a big thing, is I totally agree, and feel these gentlemen were justified in coming in, because I, there's a lot of noisy vehicles around my business and around my home this time of year. So, but I would also suggest citizens do check out the Grand Prairie Police Commission and let them know, because they are the ones that have the, the authority to direct the Grand Prairie Police Service specifically. But just an anecdotal today, I was driving, and I did see Grand Prairie bylaw had a vehicle that could have failed a number of things, be it exhaust, lack of mud flaps, tinted windshield, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So saw that vehicle pulled over, and whether that was noise-related or not, but I do know that our, our bylaw, our, our officers are out ticketing vehicles that are in violation.
Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just a suggestion that was brought to me, and I'm not sure if it's, it's actually possible. So I want to ask administration, is there a process where, I live in an area, and somebody goes by, and it's extremely loud, and I write down their license plate number, and there was a follow-up call from, whether it's GPPS or RCMP? I mean, vehicles are registered, they know the address of the home, generally. Is, is there a process that people could do that? I guess the reason I'm asking is, I think for the community right now, if they don't see any action, it, it feels like if they could at least call in 311 and say, "Here's the license plate number of a vehicle that had excessive noise." Maybe there's a follow-up process, something like that. Is that something we could look into doing? Are we even allowed to do that, I guess? I'm just curious on a process of what that'd look like.
Chief Lemieux.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So actually, in the past, we've had programs like that in the City of Grand Prairie, where you could report someone, and there was actually a form you filled out. It's value-added to, if you have a license plate number, to report that, again, through 311 or directly to the police. If, they may not be able to charge that person or issue a violation ticket unless the complainant agreed to go to court. However, that doesn't prevent GPPS or Enforcement Services from having a conversation with the owner. And simply, sometimes a conversation, education is helpful. So there's value in providing that information if somebody has that information.
So hearing that, and just wondering about frequency of that, and with, wanting to get in the weeds of telling our bylaw or RCMP to do this, I mean, I guess I'm looking for administration, what steps can council do here to actually increase the frequencies of the amount of times we're trying to issue these tickets, and also try to bring awareness with, within our own media platforms and everything of, of the opportunities of what we could do? I, I feel like now that it's spring, we're gonna get a week, a weekly email from people in, in various parts of the community, and I just, I guess it'd be nice to arm them with something.
I'm just gonna say, I think it would be very appropriate for you to ask your two council representatives to bring this up at the next police commission. My question to Chief Lemieux was gonna be, in anticipation of GPPS ramping up this initiative that they did last year, could there be potentially City of Grand Prairie communication in alignment with what GPPS would be doing, to communicate the expectations and to let people know that we are taking this seriously? We've heard it for multiple years, and we will be cracking down on modified vehicles that create too much noise.
Absolutely. And you may recall, last year, we did an education campaign. We also had Amnesty Day, which was, people could come with their vehicle and have an inspection by Enforcement Services to see if the modification were legal, be legal. So we didn't have a big uptake on that. So people were reluctant to come and talk to Enforcement Services about their modification on their vehicles. However, we did do a substantial education campaign, and we'll talk to our communication, Communication Department and do that again this year.
Can I just follow up? And I appreciate, I'm just, from administrations, we don't, from council, we don't need to make any motions for administration to go out and figure out how to report a noise or something like that, something that GPPS or something would do. We don't have to do any formalized motions from council. Getting head nods, okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor O'Toole.
Mayor Clayton, my grandson bought a new car, or a new car to him. It had tinted windows, and it had headers on it with no mufflers. And I sat him down, and I said, "You're gonna get pulled over, and it's not gonna take very long." And he goes, "Yeah, yeah, grandpa, I know, I know." Well, 24 hours later, he had a ticket for loud, loud exhaust, and his windows were stripped of the, the stuff. He had 14 days to show the police officer that gave him the ticket that it was replaced and repaired. So it, he was mad at me. I says, "Hey, I was the one that complained." So we're not good friends right now.
Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you very much. Sometimes they go by so fast, you wouldn't be able to get a license plate number. And 84th Avenue from 100th Street to 108th Street is a racetrack from midnight till 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning, which is very disturbing. I've been contacted by a number of neighbors there. My wife has to run out. She has a NIOSH app on her phone. She goes out to the corner and is measuring people's loudness, which is driving me crazy. The guys said, "Just ignore it." But it's pretty hard to ignore it when you can't even carry on a conversation. So I hope that some areas in town are identified. I think last year, it was from 84th down through the south, past the Crown and Anchor, was identified. And I know they did a stop before the bridge, and it was stopping people and, and doing tests on the vehicles. And I really appreciate that effort. I hope they repeat that again this year. But thank you.
Mr. Burke.
Just to expand on my head nod, as enforcement are under GPPS, just encourage, if it is a priority of council, that the commission members that are representatives highlight that as an important initiative for the city. From the administration, from city administration side, we'd be happy to work with, with Grand Prairie Police comms to, to make a campaign. We don't need a motion for that, but would encourage the commissioners to highlight this as an important issue for, for the community.
Great, thanks for that. Counselor Bressi.
Great. Well, well, thank you. I definitely appreciate the conversation. And as was said, this, this has been a priority of service, but definitely happy to pass on to the chief as well as commission, that this is a continued priority of council. So what I'll do is, I'll send an email with Counselor O'Toole immediately highlighting this. Also make sure this gets raised at the next commission meeting. And then I'll also ask for, the chief does come to present on a quarterly basis to council, too. So also ask, "Hey, please give us an update on this, we'll be prepared to speak." Be prepared to speak this next time you come. Talk to council as a whole as well. If there's further that people would like me to do, happy, very happy to do more. But at the minimum, I'll do all of that.
Great, thanks for that. So we don't have any business arising from that one, correct? I've lost my East Graham. Okay, unless somebody wants to receive that for information. Okay, so moving on. Sorry, are you getting in the queue? Are you sure? Okay. Last call. Okay. No notices of motion. We'll now move into our recess, and we'll be back at 6 o'clock. See you then. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome back to the city council meeting of April 21st, 2025. We are now in our evening session. We have one item of business, one public hearing, so I am going to move to that before we go to council member roundtable. Item number 16.1, the Arbor Hills area structure plan, Arbor Hills 1 outline plan, land use bylaw, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Johnson for introduction, or I apologize, I will turn it over to Ms. Patel. Let's start that again. I'll call this public hearing order and then I'll turn it over to you. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Administration has received an application to adopt proposed Arbor Hills 1 outline plan and to amend the land use bylaw in accordance with the proposed OP. The application also includes amendments to the Arbor Hills area structure plan. The plan area is 60.45 hectares of undeveloped land located on the north edge of the city boundary. The land is bounded on the east by 108th street and on the south by 132th avenue. The land to the west of the plan area are currently occupied by the Bear Creek Golf Course, while the lands to the east encompass the residential neighborhood of Arbor Hills 2, which is currently under development. The quarter sections to the north and the south of the plan area location are currently agricultural lands that are designated for future urban development. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the Arbor Hills area structure plan. This includes reducing and redefining the commercial area and introducing additional low-density residential uses. As a high-level planning document, the ASP guides future development and servicing ensuring alignment with the city's long-term vision. The proposed amendment maintains consistency with the overall structure of the neighborhoods as well as the broader context, particularly with the Agesan residential area of Arbor Hills 2 to the east, the future development concept of the Hidden Valley area structure plan to the south, and the proposed Windsor ASP to the north in the county. The applicant is proposing the Arbor Hills 1 outline plan to provide a detailed framework for the future development of lands along the northern limit of the Grand Prairie for residential, commercial, and public service purposes. The proposed outline plan includes design concepts for local road configuration, open space, land use patterns, and municipal servicing for Arbor Hills 1 neighborhood. The plan's developable area is 60.45 hectares, which follows a modified grid pattern with no cul-de-sacs in the neighborhood. This layout improves snow clearing, garbage collection, and overall neighborhood connectivity. Currently, the entire quarter section is zoned urban reserve in the land use bylaw, except for the school site, which is zoned public service. The purpose of the urban reserve district is to protect the land from premature subdivision and development. reserve district is to protect the land from premature subdivision and development. This amendment will rezone the portion of the land to small lot residential district and combined residential district to support the Phase Two development of the proposed Arbor Hills One Outline Plan. The proposed outline plan and the associated amendments meet a number of policies in the municipal development plan, as shown on the slide. The proposal was reviewed by relevant departments. Notices were mailed to the Ageson property owners. Two notice of rezoning signs were placed on the subject property, and the applicant also conducted public engagement as per the requirement of the municipal development plan. And no concerns were received regarding the proposed amendments. Administration concludes that the proposed amendments are consistent with the intent of the MTP and are also consistent with the Ageson areas. Based on this background and analysis, administration recommends that council give bylaws C-1212K, C-1463, and bylaws C-1260, 192, three readings. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Ms. Patel. Opportunity for questions for administration. Seeing none, I'll move into the presentation and submission portion and ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of this area structure plan and outline plan and land use bylaw. Once you get a moment, your mics are on if you want to introduce yourself for those who are watching. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering. Scott Privates with Prudential Lands. So we'll be short and sweet here. I think for the most part, everybody's been aware this is, this project's been on the, I don't know, it's probably been close to five years since we planned the first phase, which was the JP2 Catholic School. So now that we're getting to what seems like a little bit better economic conditions, developer wanted to proceed with some development in the neighborhood. So therefore, this document is created. We did not receive really any information or any input from public. We circulated everybody and didn't really hear anything back, which is generally a good sign. So not too much, but the servicing and design reports, everything's approved through, for whether it's for all or design reports that we do, so the transportation, sanitary water, storm sewer, and also all the necessary documents to accommodate the subject plan. So nothing too major there. I think for the most part, a bunch of this servicing in this area has already been completed with the JP2 school. So for the most part, we'll just see residential and commercial development from this point on. So there is, I think we've got a subdivision application in. I can't recall if we've gotten approval, probably not quite yet until this is completed, but the intention, I think, for Prudential is to get in the ground here fairly shortly with this development. So I don't know if Scott wanted to add anything to add, but fairly straightforward for us.
And you're done?
Yeah.
No, just here for questions. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Counsel Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. It is straightforward and just a simple question, no opposition at all. But what inspired the motivation or changes to the area?
Like the, well, at one point, this whole block, I don't know, works or not, but the block around like that half circle, at one point, if you remember back, that's where the regional hospital was planned to go.
Okay.
So then we always kept it as like, maybe something else would go there. And now that we're developing, yeah, so that, the whole section there in the middle of us where that the hospital site was supposed to be.
Okay.
So once we decided to do a phaser, then we had to kind of finalize that plan.
Yeah, I appreciate the background. Thanks.
That would be the change. Is that what you're asking?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, servicing for the most part stayed pretty similar, like their accesses and whatnot. We were kind of locked into that layout, so the changes are kind of subject to that. So, but it did work out fairly well.
Great. I don't see, oh, Counsel O'Toole.
So if this gets approved tonight, or whenever it takes place, when are you going to start building out there, like the roads and stuff like that? Get the development done?
We have the underground and grading tender closing on Thursday, so, and the roads tend to going out shortly. So I would expect very soon, probably within a month.
At the end of the day, when someone asks me what's going on there, I can tell them that there's going to be roads built this summer and possibly houses as well. There you go. Thank you very much.
All right. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Thank you for coming today. Appreciate your time. I'll ask a second time if there's anyone here to speak in support of the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan, Arbor Hills One Outline Plan, and the land use bylaw. Seeing no one, I'll see if there's anyone here, I'll ask a third time rather, if there's anyone here to speak in support of these changes. I'll now ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition of the presentation, which is 16.1 Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan, Arbor Hills One Outline Plan, and the land use bylaw amendments. I'll ask a third time if there's anybody here to speak in support of these, or rather, in opposition of these changes. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Look for business arising. Recognizing Counsel O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like counsel to give first reading to bylaw C-1212K being amendment to the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan.
Thanks for that, Counsel O'Connor. That motion is in order. There's no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, I'd like to move council give second reading to bylaw C-1212K.
Thanks for that. Opportunity for questions for administration, discussion or debate. Seeing no one, I'll call the question.
In favor.
Please vote. Counsel Resi in favor. And that carries unanimously. Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, I'd like to move council have third reading of bylaw C-1212K at this meeting.
Thank you for that. In order for us to have third reading here today, this must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counsel O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council give third reading to bylaw C-1212K being an amendment to the Arbor Hills Area Structure Plan.
This motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Counsel O'Toole.
Thank you. I move the council give first reading to bylaw C-1463, being an amendment to adopt the Arbor Hills One Outline Plan.
So this is first reading to bylaw C-1463 being a bylaw to adopt the Arbor Hills One Outline Plan. No discussion or debate on first reading. Call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor O'Toole.
At this time, I move the council give second reading to bylaw C-1463.
Motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question on second reading. That carries unanimously. Counsel O'Toole.
I move the council have third reading of bylaw C-1463 at this meeting.
Thanks for that motion. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, this must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue with discussion or debate, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counsel O'Toole.
I move the council give third reading, third reading to bylaw C-1463 being a bylaw to adopt the Arbor Hills One Outline Plan.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counsel Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-192, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. No discussion or debate on first reading. Call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Counsel O'Toole, or Counsel Berg, rather.
I would like to move council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-192.
Thank you for that motion. Opportunity for questions for administration or discussion debate. Seeing no one in the queue with discussion or debate, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counsel Berg.
I would like to move council have third reading of bylaw C-1260-192 at this meeting.
Thank you for that motion. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Counsel Berg.
I would like to move council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-192 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you for that motion. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question on third reading. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to today's, on today's agenda, no delegation business. We're going to move to council member reports, and I'll start with Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will report on three things today. I attended a meeting of the Peace Library. Sorry, it's my phone ringing. What the heck?
It's election time.
Yes, I attended a board meeting of the Peace Library System and went through, it was, you know, my first meeting sitting at that table. So it was a good learning experience. We were joined partway through the meeting by the Grand Prairie Public Library. It's a little kind of meet and greet to figure out who's who. And it was interesting. Nothing overwhelming happened at that meeting, although I have to say Tom Burton was there his first meeting after having a heart attack. Kind of seems to me like if you have a heart attack Sunday, you don't need to go to a meeting on Friday. But anyway, I also attended an event in Edmonton hosted by Alberta Council called Propelling Alberta. And that was to talk about aviation in the province and where aviation in the province needs to go. It was really a reception, so there was not a lot of detailed conversation there. I think they could have done a better job of that, but nevertheless, I did have an opportunity to speak with Minister Lowen, Minister Jean, also a brief chat with MLA Getson and Tony Yao. And I was interested to meet the CEO of South Nahanni Airways, which flies out of Fort Simpson. And he's the highest, he has the highest security clearance of any civilian pilot that you can have in Canada. So he has flown everybody who's anybody. And he has, he brings his planes to Grand Prairie and has some service there by Adventure Aviation. So it's just an example of some of the opportunities that airport lands have in developing towards the future. There was, MLA Getson spoke, of course, about economic corridors, and Alberta Aviation talked a little bit about how they see their role in the province and how they line that up. And then, of course, Alberta Council spoke. There was also people there from Invest Alberta, and it was a good opportunity to chat with how we see aerospace developing within the province. And finally, the other event that I attended was the Grand Prairie Airport AGM and their regular board meeting, which I attended by Zoom coming back from the Propelling Alberta event in Edmonton. So it was kind of an airport airline week for me. The financial statements, et cetera, were presented at the airport AGM. It was attended by the mayor and city manager. I didn't see anything there that surprised me. I'm always kind of disappointed when nothing surprises me. But business progressed as usual.
Thanks for that, Counsel Blackmore. Counsel Resi.
Well, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Since our colleague seems to know so much, I'm disappointed to hear she's disappointed constantly.
Don't push it.
A few things that I got to, got to attend was with Alberta municipalities, I got to attend executive committee and also an emergency meeting we had to talk about Bill 50, which is bringing a number of amendments to Municipal Government Act and the Local Authorities' Election Act. Some of them are good amendments, such as some of the definitions being put around ICFs, but some are truly terrible, including I really think it's a travesty that there's not going to be a code of conduct for councillors anymore. And we can behave however we wish to behave without consequences, at least in the interim until the province gets its own code of conduct in, is troubling. And the way the minister's talking, there won't be any codes of conduct for councillors outside of council chambers. And I do know there are, not on this council, but across the province, I do know stories of councillors who have very clearly used their roles to abuse staff or abuse community members. And I think it is utterly ridiculous that there's going to be zero consequence for those councillors now. But I also take a lot of comfort that we live in a community where our voters elect good people, and our voters don't have a lot of tolerance for that stuff. And so I think we'll probably be okay here in Grand Prairie, but still, it's been interesting and I think important to engage in those changes the province is making. I got to attend Police Commission meeting along with Counselor O'Toole, and really am impressed by Superintendent McKnight, the new officer in charge at the RCMP detachment, and pleased to see the progress continues to happen on the, on the standing up of the GPPS. So always look forward to those commission meetings. And then finally, with Counselor O'Toole and Mayor Clayton, I got to attend the Economic Developers Association and get to have some conversations about what's going on in economic development across the province, and how can we do better here. The presentation I enjoyed the most, though, actually was about a region, and it was by the folks at O'Leary Ventures talking about Wonder Valley. And it was really validating to hear some outside people who are already spending a lot of money in our community to plan for potential huge investments, talk about why they picked our community, and the people we've got here, the infrastructure we've got here, the policy landscape we've got here, but also, because she probably won't toot her own horn, but the political leadership we have here, including Mayor Clayton. Something that really got mentioned by them was when they first became interested in Grand Prairie, how much Mayor Clayton dropped, as well as at the time Minister Taves dropped to show them around the region and really help them understand the opportunity here and how that was, I think, our role as government is definitely to have regulation, regulation is sensible, but also to open the doors where opening the doors is sensible. And I'm really proud to be working with a mayor and other elected officials in the region who really get that vision, I think, get that balance right. So it was really validating to get to hear that wonderful presentation.
Thanks, Counsel Resi. Counsel Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Had, I guess, two events. I attended the flag raising here for the kicking off of Sea Heritage Month at City Hall. And then my other one was the Grand Prairie Airport Commission AGM and regular board meeting. Just a few stats out of our airport right now. We've had an increase of 4.6% from 2024. So we're just up over 270,000 passengers last year with a goal of hitting about 290 this year. Our load factors continue to be strong. We just sadly need more flights to get back to our pre-COVID numbers, which were 65% back from there as well. They did give us an update. They did a joint chamber survey to try to get some feedback from other people in the region. And 52% said price was a driving factor when they were booking a flight. And 46% chose Vancouver as our next flight option, which is something the commission's been working quite strongly on, trying to get, and to get more flights to the region. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Plott. Counsel Tison.
Well, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Well, it was a good couple weeks. I didn't have any external committees that I, that I went to, but a few events that I'll highlight that I haven't heard yet. I attended the Fletcher House Open House and Tour of the six-story building right here. That is helping to offset some of our homeless issues and give people... That is helping to offset some of our homeless issues and give people places to stay that maybe require a little extra assistance and some independent living spaces there, too. Being somebody who used to work in that building, I can tell you, like, they have really changed the place. It's hardly recognizable. The old commercial kitchen's gone. It's now a lounge, living, recreation space. They moved one of the older kitchens and expanded that. And yeah, the rooms look really, really great. Nothing like when I was rolling through the doors there about 12 years ago. I also attended the 65th anniversary celebration of Grand Spirit Foundation, which happened on April 11th. So Grand Spirit officially became a senior, which is great, since we serve seniors and families. I was able to give greetings at Heritage Lodge on behalf of not only Grand Spirit Foundation, but the City of Grand Prairie and Alberta Seniors and Community Housing. So there's a lot of titles to put on, on my chest, standing in front of a bunch of really grateful seniors. But spent the time there talking about the rich history of Grand Spirit and how it served the community. And then after serving cake to all the residents, I got some visit time in there for a couple of hours, which is really great. Because I don't think I get enough opportunities to go and to see yourselves, even as a member of Grand Spirit Foundation. So anytime this happens, they always say, you're always welcome to come, but you just never know if you're crossing the line. So it was really good to be able to, to sit down with a lot of seniors, hear their stories, and see how Grand Prairie has changed for the better over the years. I also attended the, the Grand Prairie Fire Department Annual Awards and Recruitment Graduation. Got eight new graduates, which was awesome. And during my, my report at Public and Protective Services, I congratulated our winners, the dispatcher of the year Lydia Lowy and our firefighter of the year Mark Brazier. There were also other awards given out for long service. Mike's laughing because I got Mark's name wrong again. Mark, if you're watching, I apologize. I owe you three hugs next time I see you. And finally, I got to attend with many members of council, the Grand Gathering Gala. This is the fourth edition of the Friendship Centre's big fundraiser. And I haven't heard the final totals, but I was running my calculator during, during the event of the live auction. And they went over $70,000 on their live auction items, which is really great to see, knowing that those silent auction items and the special auction items were still up for grabs, as well as 50/50s, ring boxes and stuff. I'm fairly certain they're going to get at least over $200,000 for their efforts, probably closer to three or four. So it's really good to see that. I know the Friendship Centre struggled to find ways to raise money for what they do, which is a very valuable service in our community for all people. And this Grand Gathering Gala has been something else for them and something else that is super special. And I hope it just keeps going because the entertainment's great, the food's great, and the culture experience is very rich. So we were blessed to be able to attend that. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Thiessen. Councillor O'Toole.
Well, storm is in the air. We won eight games straight and we've lost two. But tomorrow night is another game. And that's why all the council members are wearing a Storm jersey to support the, the team. So we've got two games here in Grand Prairie this week. Kind of looking forward to seeing them. On the 9th, 10th, and 11th, I went to an EDA conference and flew back to Grand Prairie just in time to go to the Grand Prairie Fire Department Awards Recognition Ceremony and Recruit Class, which councillor Thiessen has just mentioned. I attended the Grand Gathering Gala, 60 years of the Friendship Centre being in Grand Prairie. And after that, we, on the 19th, I went to the East Indian Cultural Association's Vasiki. With that, earlier in the week, I attended the Indian Sikh flag raising here at City Hall. And it doesn't seem like there's a lot going on in my life, but it was a pretty busy week and, or two. And I also attended the Grand Prairie Police Service Commission and Committee Meetings held last week. And with that, that is my report for this week.
Thanks, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. One of my assignments, Grand Prairie Public Library. We had a meeting, but then we also had that joint meeting, as mentioned by councillor Blackmore, with the Peace Library Systems. And, and just familiarization on, on the two organizations working together. Also had a Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Meeting. And new executive director Jasmine is working hard staffing up for a busy summer season. Of course, we were without an executive director last year. But now that we've got one in place, things are moving forward quickly and positively, which is wonderful to see. One of the things that Jasmine had organized was Tourism Trivia Night at the casino. So I went to there right after our library meeting. And I was challenged by the emcee, which is Erica Fisher, to be a team of my own. So most teams had about five or six, and, and I was kind of a lone wolf. And there was 20 questions, and through 16, I was tied for first. But then I blew question 17, 18, 19, and fell out of contention. But congratulations to the team at the airport for winning first place in that trivia contest. Then I also attended a Northern Sky Tourism Workshop. This is a federal government initiative, and what they're trying to do is develop tourism corridors. And so with the Northern Sky Tourism, it's Edmonton to Grand Prairie to Yellowknife. So we had tourism people from Explore Edmonton, also from Northwest Territories in Yellowknife. And they were in town to discuss the opportunities that they could build in here as they put together different types of trips for different people that want to travel up to Yellowknife. And with one of the major stops being right here in Grand Prairie. So this is a very long-term initiative. So again, they will launch, as we were discussing, using metaphors, with seeds. It might take a little while to bear some substantial fruit. But we're planting the seeds now, again, to build this long-term tourism route from Edmonton to Yellowknife. And that's some of my highlights from the past couple of weeks.
Thanks, councillor Berg. Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I attended also Fletcher House Open House. And it was great to have Kathy and Jared give us a tour of the space. As Chris Thiessen mentioned, it's totally revamped and looking great. Attended the Grand Prairie Fire Department Annual Awards. And the eight graduates were chosen from 200 applications to show you how important it is and how well they do at attracting the best candidates. And it's Mark Brazier. Okay, Mark Brazier. Okay, we'll get it. Okay, thank you. So I went to, attended the Sports Excellence Awards, always great. We have great representation for sports in this area. And we're very proud that they represent us all over Canada. So really appreciated that. Attended the Grand Gathering, which was a huge success. And I was able to walk away with a whiskey tasting. So that's very good. Whiskey friends, ha ha, I can be bright. So I attended the Sport Connection Board Meeting. And then the CAB Housing and Homelessness Committee Meeting on Thursday. And attended the Vasiki Flag Raising and went to Vasiki. And always the talent that is shown off by these little kids. There was a little kid there, I don't think she was two feet high. And she just made you just grab your heart because it was just phenomenal to see her. And then all the ladies finished off the evening with a routine that was over 10 minutes, but so well worth it. And then there was a dance-off between Kevin O'Toole and I. And apparently he says I won. I'm not sure, but it doesn't matter. And so, go Storm, go. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor O'Connor. I'll mention a few things as I wasn't here in person for the last council meeting. I did want to highlight something from the previous weeks. I wanted to thank the administration and all the support of the organization and my colleagues for an excellent state-of-the-city event. It takes a lot of work for that event. And, and, and the room was full. The panelists were great. The people who were keynotes were exceptional. And I just really wanted to thank everybody from within the organization for their support on producing an excellent event and supporting me. Also that day, it was an extremely busy day. We hosted through Invest Grand Prairie an event to invite our friends and stakeholders from forestry, ag, and energy. So another great event, highlighting Invest Grand Prairie and the work that they do to support industry in business retention and attraction. So thanks to the team at MSGP for their support for another great event. Through, as mentioned by councillor Resi, there's been a lot of work done in advocacy recently. I had the opportunity with Midsay City Mayor's Caucus to have a meeting with Minister MacIver regarding Bill 50. I know this is a priority of AB Munis, RMA, and the Midsay City Mayors in regards to what the future of municipal operations work. And, and really the, the, I would say, the conduct of those elected officials and the conversation about your behavior within City Hall walls. We know it goes much further than that. Our council understands the role that we play in our community and, and, and hold ourselves accountable to a higher regard. And, and I'm optimistic that the minister will make some changes to, to reflect that as, as elected officials who hold ourselves to a high regard. I can say that there are municipalities that struggle with this, and the relationships with staff is extremely important. So I look forward to some changes in that. Attended with some of my colleagues, the Economic Developers of Alberta Conference. But the highlight of that for me was that we were award-winning that week. We not only won an award for our work that we're doing with the Chamber of Commerce, the county, and the MD of Greenview for the large community region project for Work Northwest. We also won the Best in Show for Work Northwest. So that was an incredible opportunity to be highlighted. And, and thank you to Minister Jones for being there to recognize the winners. That week, we also won an award through some of the work we're doing with Invest Northwest on the site selectors activity that took place almost a year ago. But in collaboration with the city and the county and the MD. So it was great to be recognized for the hard work that happens on a regular basis. So I wanted to highlight that. Also attended with some of my colleagues, councillor Thiessen and councillor O'Connor, councillor O'Toole, the Grand Prairie Fire Awards Ceremony and the recruit graduation. So new recruits, as well as recognizing some of the incredible work that's done by our firefighters. So that was a wonderful ceremony. And thanks to Chief Lemieux for the work that he does on a regular basis with his former colleagues, but I know they're still close to his heart, so it was a great event. As mentioned, attended the Sports Excellence Ward and recognized some incredible athletes, events, coaches, and teams from across the region. Once again, an excellent event. And the Grand Gathering. Thanks for councillor Thiessen for recognizing that event. Excuse me. The flag raising for Seek Heritage Month. Thank you to the organizers of that. And I also wanted to thank councillor Resi for the work that he did to put me in front of a class at Avondale. They had a, quite a great group of grade fives. Didn't believe that a mayor could be female. And they didn't understand the dynamics of a municipal council. So it was councillor Resi's son was in that class, and there was lots of great questions. I was very engaging. I, I think that they had fun. I know I had fun. And so thank you to councillor Resi for arranging that. And last but not least, I wanted to mention that I recently, with Ms. Pinnock, had a meeting with Wendy Christina from Warehouser in regards to the work that's being done on the Upper Smoky Subregional Plan. There is an open house for that. It's on April 23rd. You can find it online. That consultation will happen through the next little while. Their industry is extremely optimistic that if the plan that's being presented is approved, that they will be successful. So council, I'll have an opportunity to update you a little bit more on that in the near future. But I was pleased to hear from Warehouser in particular that the plan seems to be coming together in order to make them continue to be successful in harvesting as well as reforestation. So with that, as mentioned, Grand Prairie Storm tomorrow night, Wednesday night. Tickets are available. Bonnet's Energy Center. We know we have the highest attendance in the league. So let's fill the building. Let's be really loud. We want our Storm guys to win the next two so we can get on the road to Calgary and win it there. So thank you to my council and my colleagues, everyone, for being here and enjoy the rest of your night. Thanks.